Thank you all for attending. We really appreciate the council for putting on this forum. Appreciate all of our candidates for attending and all of you for coming to hear what they have to say. Before we hear from the candidates, we want to give a little bit of a high-level overview of the school board's role. And from the website, the board sets the vision, mission, and goals for the district, moderates the district's progress toward those goals, hires and evaluates the superintendent, reviews, revises, and adopts the operating policy, and establishes and oversees the financial affairs of the districts, and serves as community representatives. The ISD, as most of you probably know, is large. We have 27 schools across 110 square miles, including Issaquah, Mammoth, Renton, Newcastle, and Bellevue. In the ISD, the school board candidates must reside within the boundaries of the specific director district they are elected to represent. There are five director districts, but each director represents the entire district. So the community votes on each of the candidates, not just the candidate from the district in which you live. Each candidate for school board was invited to this forum this evening, and the current school board seats that are up for election are districts two and four. Chinme Nagarkar, Natalie Anderson, Lavinia Harden are running for district two, along with Darren Chung and Jared Heffaker. Not here this evening, Darren and Jared. Sydney Mullings is running for reelection in position four, along with Mark Lazara, also not here this evening. We will give each candidate one minute to do an introductory statement and ask that they include whether they have students currently in or have had students in Issaquah School District. Okay. I will start with Chinme.
All right. Thank you. I hope you can hear me. So my name is Chinme Nagarkar, and I am running for a board position two, as it was mentioned earlier. I'm a dad, I'm a husband, I'm a technologist, and I've been a TEELS computer science teacher in Bellevue High. I have participated in the math and physics Olympiads as a mentor and a judge. And over the last couple of years, I would say that my feeling about the school district has changed from the school district being exceptionally good, because my daughter graduated from Liberty High School, to it needs some improvements. And so I'm running to bring my experience and bring back focus on safety, academic excellence, CTE, financial prudence, and, most important of all, make improvements to the governance model.
Thank you, Chinme. We appreciate it. I should have pointed out, we do have a timekeeper right up here up front with nice big numbers that turn yellow and red when you get down to time. So I will move on. Natalie?
All right. Hi, my name is Natalie Anderson, and I'm running for district two. I have two children that go to Maple Hills Elementary School. My son just graduated kindergarten, and my daughter just graduated fourth grade. So we will be in the district for quite a while, with my son having another 12 years ahead of him. My husband and I decided to move to the Renton area so that we could be in the Issaquah School District. We feel that it is the best district in the area, and we wanted to set our children up for success. So I'm running to help keep that going forward, right? We have got a lot of struggles ahead of us with our current administration, and I want to make sure that we keep things protected like DEI and things like that. So that's why I'm running, and thank you to the Issaquah Highlands for hosting us tonight.
Thank you very much. Lavinia?
Thank you. Hello, my name is Lavinia Harden, and I am proud to be a part of this district for the past 19 years. Oh, sorry. How's that? A parent, a volunteer, and advocate for students and family. I'm running because I believe that every student deserves to be more than academic achievements. They deserve to be seen, heard, and supported. I don't know what's going on with the time. And I want to ensure that, that, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. But they, that every student deserves to be seen, heard, and supported. Thank you.
Okay, Sydney?
Hey, thanks for having me. It's good to be in my home location. I'm an Issaquah Highlands resident. So I'm Sydney Mullings. I've been on the school board since I was appointed in 2019 and elected a couple times again since then. So thank you. I have two kids who've been through the Issaquah School District. I have a daughter who actually just completed her first year of college after graduating from IHSS, and a freshman at IHSS, who were gradridge and ECMS before that. Professionally, I'm the chief marketing officer for Microsoft in the Americas. I'm excited to keep doing this work. I think it's an important role to ensure that we have exceptional educational experiences for all students, and that really is all of our students, regardless of their needs or their desires for their future. My focus is most often on student voice and making sure that we hear students in the process, as well as making sure that we're looking across their entire educational cycle for great results.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all of your introductions. Just a reminder, this is a forum, not a debate. There will be, you know, we ask you not target your opponents with any of your answers. There will be no opportunity for rebuttals. We'll move on to the question and answer section. The questions were cultivated from a lot of questions provided by the community, and each applicant will have 90 seconds for their response. Start with question one. As mentioned in going over the role of the school board, the first item is to set the vision, mission, and goals of the district. With that, they set out a strategic plan that we handed out to everyone here tonight. Do you think the district has been focused on the right things in recent years, and you have an favorite element of the current strategic plan? On the other side of that, what do you see as the biggest gaps or area for improvement? And do you think there's anything missing from the district's strategic plan? I'll start with Lavinia. I will mix up the order each question.
I do think that the strategic plan is well-written, and, are we good with the mic? Thank you. I think before changing the strategic plan, I think it's important to see what is working before making those changes. I think at some point, there would become a time where we can identify what needs to be changed, and that's what I have.
Great. Thank you very much. Natalie?
Yeah, so I agree. I mean, I think the vision, mission, and goals have been very successful. Again, you know, I'm here in this district because I believe that it's the best. Unfortunately, you know, I don't know what gaps there are right now, but I do know that one of the things that I am most supportive and excited for are the CTE programs, the career technical education. I've had 20 years in the aerospace industry, and I know that that's one of the programs that's coming in right now. And so I think that that's a fantastic program that we're doing right. Yeah, I mean, looking at the strategic plan, I'm in full support of everything that's been outlined. Of course, we can always do things better, right? But I definitely think that we're on the right track. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Sydney?
Thank you. I've had time developing the strategic plan, so I have a lot of opinions about it. Do I think it covers the right things? I do. I think our goal was really to be wide-ranging, from the health and well-being of our students to what academic opportunities they can pursue, to the environment we create within the district. So I think those are important. If I have to pick one of my favorite, for me, it really is the student well-being, right? If our kids are not healthy, if they are not fed, if they are not safe, both in their home environments, as well as their school environments, if they don't have the supports they need, they really can't get to the rest of the list. So I think for me, student well-being underpins all of it. I was really happy to see this printed out today. I think next is really authentic engagement, right? We have an opportunity to always improve how we're connecting with our students, with our families, with our teachers, and making sure that we're hearing the needs, making sure that we're acting accordingly. If there's something that I think is missing, I think this list was pretty long when we got started two years ago. We're two years into a three-year plan. There's been incredible progress. I think our opportunity is, what's the simplified dashboard of what that progress is against the plan, so that we can make sure people are really aware of where we're at and where we still have to go.
Great. Thank you. Chinme?
I like the plan. I've also seen the operational evaluation documents, all of them, about 20 or 30 documents. But I'll tell you something. Although this looks like a beautiful document, it is of no use, and I'll tell you why. It's a paradox, isn't it? It's a beautiful document, but of no use. The reason is, how do we know what's working? How do we know if you've been successful? It's a three-year plan. Everything will change in three years. What's going to happen next quarter, this year? We don't know. We don't know how many improvements are going to be made and what the impact on the data is going to be. We have the data. We should use it to set goal-oriented goals, sorry, data-oriented goals, that can be measured, that can be tested, and that way, the superintendent knows what to target and can achieve those goals successfully. And if not, we will help them as board members to provide the right resources and take that forward. So I think we need to try and add to this, not delete anything, but add to this data measurements, what we call objectives, that are driven and smart, specific, measurable, actionable, and testable. Once we do that, I guarantee you that the teachers will do the right thing. They will innovate. The superintendent will be successful if we tell the superintendent how to be successful and what it means to be successful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Question number two. The ISD is incredibly diverse, but has segments of the population with a small representation in our district. Please provide examples of programs, resources, and opportunities you will advocate to implement to address the unique needs of the underrepresented communities within the student population, making sure everyone feels seen, respected, and included. I'll start with Natalie.
Well, I'm very proud to say that I'm raising two children in a very diverse community. I think that diversity is, you know, again, I mentioned, I think, DEI when I was talking with some people today. That's one of the areas that I really want to focus on and make sure that is, you know, secured in our district. And so when we're talking about diversity, I think it comes down to training and making sure that we have available, you know, what's needed in the classroom to make sure that we're addressing the cultures that are in our community. And, you know, I don't know what programs and kinds of things that I can necessarily suggest here in the moment, you know, but I think that training and offering whatever we can to make sure that we stay as diverse as we can is the way to go.
Great. Thank you very much. Sydney?
Thank you. So we certainly have a rich community. We have many languages spoken within the district. We have diverse learning styles within the district, and I think there's probably a million different ways you could split the different kinds of people we have. I think for me, what's most important is how do we have programs and approaches that reaches people where they are, can bring them into the process of the district, they can feel included in that conversation. And so the programs that are maybe, that are featuring my mind this evening are really around advances in language translation, whether it's on our websites, in our documents, when we have host gatherings of our community, do we have translators on site? How do we continue to allow people to participate in the process? So where we have today, and I think I 100% support going forward, is even down to registration help. It's hard to register your kid each year, each of us, even though I've been in the district many years. So where we're able to provide smaller groups with language support and allow people to understand what's available to them is super important. I think we also have to look at where we have great diversity of wealth and income within our district. And we have a lot of programs that are available to those with much more funds in their families. And so where we can be very sensitive to ensuring that we allow all opportunities for all students, whether through scholarship or other access, super important.
Thank you. Chinme?
So I agree with everything that has been said so far about diversity and the importance of those programs. Diversity of skin color is only as important as diversity of thought that comes out of that. When we bring diverse people in, we get more ideas, and then we can solve bigger problems. I think that we should first think about what's happening in our schools. We have 40% of Issaquah High School students saying that I cannot express my opinion in the classroom because I don't feel like that will be taken well. There is a data in the OE report. 40%, 2% of students who are black, 14% of students who are suspended are black. That's a 7X number. You won't believe this, but twice the number of special-needs kids get suspended than regular kids. Special-needs kids, my daughter is special-needs, I know what that means. If you are a special-needs kid and you get suspended, you are more likely to get an out-of-school suspension. Is that how we are going to create trust in the community? We are spending $18 million on special needs, and we should spend more. But we should look at the data, and we should drive towards results, so that we are not stuck at the end of the year or end of three years possibly, blaming each other and trying to find fault and going nowhere in the process. So what I want to do is, I want all of the diversity, all of the goals, all of the things that we want to do, but I want to attach numbers and goals to them so that the superintendent can succeed. Thank you.
Thank you. Lavinia?
Thanks. So I think it would be important to understand the cultures that we are serving in order for us to actually address any gaps that we're missing. But I also think it's important to have teachers that also look like them or look like our community, but also the experiences too. So if it's not a teacher that looks like them, but at least they have the same type of experience. But most importantly, I think, understanding who we are serving, having clear communication is very important. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. We'll move on to question three. Behavioral health is a broad topic that includes all aspects of social emotional well-being, including, for some examples, media use, bullying, drug use and vaping, relationship dynamics, et cetera. What do you see is the district's role in relation to these topics, and what would you advocate to do in relation to supporting behavioral health? We'll start with Sydney.
Yeah, I mean, you went through a broad range of potential topics on behavioral health, and obviously, it's a concern. We have a wide range of challenges that students come to school with every day, that enters the classroom with them, that can be disruptive to their own learning and to that of their peers. And so I think the opportunity we have is not just as a district, but as a community, is to think about how do we come together on solutions for many of those issues and concerns. Within the district, we have incredible supports and programs to help and identify where our students have challenges. It's called MTSS, multi-tiered systems of support, in which we're looking at what help do our students need, what referrals can we give to them, where can they best seek help, and we help facilitate that process for student as well as family. Obviously, the district needs to keep doing that. We've invested deeply in mental health resources at all levels in the school district as well, and we've done more of that since COVID as well. I think it's an area that, as we look at our challenges with funding from a state level, as well as funding from a local level, it's one, as a school board member, we continue to advocate for additional help and support as well. But I think this is one of those areas where the engagement of community becomes really important, because students are coming from someplace. They're coming with their families, with their experiences, and we have to be able to meet them where they are and figure out the best supports.
Chinme?
I agree with Sydney. I think the multi-tiered system of support is a very good idea. Again, I'll go back to the data, and you know what I'm going to say about that. Every one of these points is the same in one way. But I do want to add a few more things. I think one of the reasons why we have issues with student behavior is that we don't listen to them, and we also don't listen to parents, and this is in the survey data. We have 40% of students and parents saying that. We are either not, they don't pay attention to us when we say something, or, you know, we don't feel safe. We need to fix that so that we can start finding out why these kids are acting out. Second, I think there's an epidemic of social media and cell phone usage, and I think people misunderstand this. It is very difficult to multitask with a phone and watching media and doing work in the school, in the classroom. We need to figure out how to get the attention of the students in the classroom, on the classwork, on learning, and less on watching their phone, opening their laptop, playing a game while the teacher's doing something else, not being able to work because my laptop is discharged. There's a lot of distractions. We need to remove them so that in the school, in the classroom, they don't have this issue. So that's number two. Number three, I think we need to be more equitable in how we administer suspensions. I've already talked about that. I think we do a lot of, there's a lot of, there are a lot of signals that occur before that. We need to pay attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Lavinia?
So I think it'd be important to find out why there's challenges and working closely with families to identify them, but because challenges can stem from a child just not even knowing what's going on in the classroom, and it also can be from their environment at home. So just really understanding why that challenge is happening. I think that is the most important thing that the school could be involved in. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. Natalie?
Yeah, so I mean, everybody's kind of already set the stage of things that I agree with, especially with what Sydney said for the community. Community engagement is so important. We need to understand what the gaps are so that we can help fill them for our students. I talked to a gentleman tonight about cell phone usage. The district has set a policy. Not everybody's enforced the policy, and we don't know if the policy is, you know, tight enough for the schools to follow. It kind of leaves some area for, you know, distractions, and again, that kind of goes back to student well-being when you have the behavioral, you know, ability with the phones. So yeah, I mean, I think I would continue to advocate for a lot of the things that we're doing today with having the counselors and, you know, continue to support what we've got right now.
Thank you. Question number four. We mentioned above that the school board functions as community representatives. How do you think the school board can help the district connect and authentically engage with our community? Chinme, I'll start with you.
All right. So as a community representative, there are two sides to this. You represent the whole district, all parents, voters, taxpayers in the district, and students, of course. And number two, you are the person who represents them with legislative, with senators, with congressmen, with state senators, et cetera. And I think we have to make sure, first of all, that we get back the trust of our taxpayers. Our bonds have failed recently, and we need to keep working on making sure they trust us. In Bellevue, one out of three kids are now homeschooled or private school, and in Issaquah, as I've door-knocked on more than 1,000 doors now, I'm hearing similar numbers. And that is a bad sign, because parents should not walk away from the public school system. We have to make sure that this system does well. Now, in terms of going to the senators or state or federal level, I will say that once we have our stuff under control, once we have the trust of our voters, once our divisions end, then you can go out there and you can demand that we have the backing of our voters, this is what they're saying to us, there is no division here, you either give it to us, or you will see the effects if you don't, right? So for example, in the IDEA law, the IDEA law, which is for special needs at the federal level, we should be able to increase the percentage that they provide to us if we are united and we can put a united voice. Thank you.
Thank you. Natalie?
I'm sorry, but can you repeat the question for me?
Absolutely. The board functions as the community representative. How do you think the school board can help the district connect and authentically engage with our community?
So helping to connect, so I think the school district right now does a really good job of communicating. There are, you know, bulletins, emails, the website is full of information, they're starting to do town halls, there's the wonderful podcasts that I've enjoyed watching and learning stuff. So, you know, there's connection happening. I think we need to look at how parents and families want to be communicated to. There might be some things that we can do with texting, there might be an app that can be developed to help push notifications. We need to find kind of every avenue that we can to try to connect with the community. 70% of our community doesn't have children enrolled in our district. So how do we communicate with those individuals if they're not getting the notifications, if they're not on our website? So I think we have to be creative. If we want to get bonds and levies passed, we need to make sure that we have town halls where questions can be asked, where we can be transparent, and we can really explain what is the money going to be used for, how is it going to help our school district. So, you know, connection is about transparency, and that's how you build your trust. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Sydney?
I think, you know, this question is kind of the core of the question. What do we do in our role? Our role has to be to connect within the community, across the community, and bring that insight into the work of policy of the district. As board directors, we do that in formal ways, with emails to the board, with public comment that comes into the board. We do that with the town halls we've had for probably the last four or five years. We'd love more participation, so if you ever hear of one, please do attend. We also encourage our district administration to have those same open sessions as well, which have been happening, to reach folks who are out in the community who do not have students. We have mailer programs, so we send out information about what's happening. I think as individual board directors, there is no shortage of opportunity at which I'm stopped at sporting event, grocery store, anywhere on my block to get information about what's happening. So those are equally important. But what's really important is what do we do with that information? And the work of the board is really to take all of the data, for which we have data of every policy we have. We review those on, at an ongoing basis, and make sure that we're seeking progress against all of our key metrics. And we then take those insights we're taking in from the community to ask additional questions. What could be better? What could be more? What could be different? And are we helping all students? So that data review that we do every session, please do join our board meetings, is deep and incredibly meaningful across the district.
Thank you. Lavinia?
Well, we just heard from the expert sitting next to me. But one of the things, and there were so many great ideas, one of the things that I was thinking about when this question came up is, similar to us campaigning, finding out what areas that we actually serve and where those communities' voices aren't heard. I think knocking on doors and being out there, because that's something that I've been doing. And I'm like, I'm part of the 70% at this point, and I'm able to connect with some of those individuals by knocking on their doors. I know our board members have busy, busy schedules, and if I get in that seat, then I'll have that as well. But I'm so interested in hearing, and I think just simply finding out where everyone is and who is, who's the one that's talking, and knocking on doors. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you. Question number five. The district has faced failed bond measures aimed at building a new high school to address overcrowding. What do you see as the solution to this issue? Lavinia?
Start with you.
I'm sorry. I couldn't hear you. Could you repeat the question, please?
The school district has faced failed bond measures aimed at addressing overcrowding. What do you see as the solution to that issue?
Well, so far, they've opened, I mean, there's plans to open up another school, so that I'll help alleviate it. But also, I think it would be important to have another comprehensive high school that will help alleviate some of the overcrowding. So, that's my answer.
Okay. Chinme?
This is a tough one, right? The bonds are for construction, for the most part, as I understand it, if I read it correctly. And it has to do with the new school and the whole process being, perhaps, in the eyes of some, an example of how something should not be done, in a sense. We started that project with $120 million budget, I think, and then it became 300-plus million. And then we, I've been talking to Issaquah Highlands contractors, for example, who tell me that the original bids were low, and they lost out on those projects to other companies, national state companies. So there's a lot of open questions on this that I think we should try and do the right thing based on current projections. Radical transparency, blameless accountability, and a careful look at what we did and how we can do it better so that we don't repeat the same mistakes again, whether the bonds fail or not, or whether our school gets built or not, which I hope it does. or not, which I hope it does, but we should not repeat this error again, I think. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Natalie?
Yeah, so I don't know about anyone else in this room, but I was pretty shocked that both of the, the bonds failed. I supported them, I support getting another high school built for the overcrowded issue. I think two of our high schools are at ninety-five percent capacity, and of the elementary, middle, and high schools, the middle schools are the ones that are increasing in enrollment, so we have to plan ahead. I think there was some mis-messaging that was occurring, and I think that for the next levy that's coming up in 2026, the board needs to get ahead of it. We need to connect again with the community and make sure that we're transparent, and that everyone knows what that money is going to be used for. We need to invest in our kids, you know, bonds are for building, and, and levies are for learning, and we need to make sure that, that money is there, so that the kids have what they need to continue to keep our district strong. So yeah, that's, I think getting ahead of that, and, and again, just being as transparent as possible, to make sure that the community feels strong in supporting them. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Sydney?
It's an important question, right? And it's a question that wraps in many things in it, right? It's about overcrowding in our schools, which all of our high schools are overcrowded today. It is about community trust, and, and an era of information challenges, like how do you break through with what is the real and true information? And then sometimes when folks are interested in presenting one that isn't the accurate information. It's also about the challenges of funding our schools in the state of Washington. So all of those things come into place. If you get to the practical, we will build a new school. We have funds from previous measures that have been approved by the community, that we will move forward and build on the site that we own, and I'm very excited to see that progress. Move forward, will that school need to grow over time? Yes, and we'll get there when we get there. But I think what we can do going forward is really focus on transparency, clarity of messaging, and one of the key important items is creating an oversight committee for all of our, all of our bond and spending. I feel very confident in how the district manages funds, it's important that everybody else does, but everybody isn't exposed to that information. So there's been a revamping of public websites to include more clarity of the information of exactly how all dollars are being spent. There has been public outreach to have people of all technical backgrounds, construction, financing, et cetera, join in and review that material, and I'm incredibly bullish on how we go forward as a community, as we go forward.
Thank you. Okay. Next question. Do you support or oppose giving teachers the ability to include LGBTQ plus messaging and stories as part of the curriculum? Should parents be given the opportunity to opt out? Explain why. Starting with Chinmei.
Yeah, I thought I was first last time, but it's a, it's a tough one. I think that we have multiple stakeholders, and parents are, in my opinion, people who give birth to the kid or adopt a child, they are the primary stakeholders, they are the legal guardians by law. And so I think parents should have a say in cases where the issues are not black and white. There are many things that are for the common good and are well-understood as the common good. Everybody needs to have a good meal, everybody needs to learn mathematics, right? And for those things, you don't have to take permission or opt in or opt out of, out of that. You just, if you don't want to do it, you can just leave school. But for things that are not scientifically proven to be good for children, through double-blind studies, for example, I think that until we, our science gets there, I think we need to be cautious, and we need to give parents the ability to opt in or opt out into those programs, so that we don't make big mistakes. For instance, with the CAS report, you know, in the UK, which pointed out some of these issues. So I think we need to be careful. We should evolve to the next level of our civilization, which will include many more things than we have right now, and more clarity and innovation and diversity and inclusion. But in the meantime, we shouldn't take big steps and end up in a ditch. I just want to be careful how we handle it. Thank you.
Lavinia?
I think any changes to the curriculum should be communicated to the families, because this creates transparency, and it also shows that the district is trying to communicate any changes that are being done. But as far as whether or not it would be something that parent, it would be parent choice if it came down to it, but I think communication is so important, and just that transparency. So thank you.
Thank you. Sydney?
So again, I'll divide into a couple of issues. There's one of curriculum and curriculum review. The district a hundred percent has a way and a process in which curriculum is open for public review and inspection. Comment periods are available, and we, we encourage all to participate in that process. And we, as a board, even talk about where their comments, did people raise them? So that's really important. There are ways today for all to have an opportunity to participate. Separate from that is, is, is about representation. Our community is a tapestry. It is a tapestry of background, it is a tapestry of experience, and it's really important, and scientifically proven, that students do better where they see themselves, where they see themselves in staff, where they see themselves in teachers, where they see themselves in story. And I absolutely support that that continues to happen going forward.
Thank you. Natalie?
Yeah, I mean, Sydney just gave the, the best answer there, and I'm in full support. So I, I support children learning about the world around them. Obviously, I agree with that communication needs to happen with the families, so that they know. Obviously, there's processes in place for the curriculum, which is so important. And, you know, teachers need the training and support, it's just like such a sex education, right? They need to know how to, how to properly teach our children about that topic, but LGBTQ plus, it's, it's our world, and, you know, I support DEI, I support making sure that the kids understand the world that they live in, and I don't think that it should be an opt-out, it needs to be a part of our everyday life. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question. What will you do to be sure you represent all students and families in the district, and not just the experience of your own student? Natalie, I'll start with you.
So, being that I'm in the Maple Hills community near Renton Highlands, talking to the community, they feel very underrepresented right now, and so, you know, I want to represent my community, but I also want to make sure that I'm representing, you know, everybody. I want to be the voice of our teachers and educators, our principals, our families, our students. They all have voices, and they all deserve to be heard, and we need to support them. So I'm not a one-issue candidate, I think that we have all kinds of different things that we can address and work on to improve, but as I've said numerous times, I think we're in a fantastic community, we have a great school district, and we just need to continue to strengthen that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Sydney?
Yep, so I guess I'd start with, you know, why does a school board have five members? I, I think that the structure of school boards is actually a very elegant solution. No individual school board member can make decisions on their own, and by definition, you have five people who represent the district geographically, their backgrounds differently, and there's really a, a very strong power in that, as people come together to serve in this way. So I think, one, it's just really important to acknowledge that that strength is kind of built into the, into the system of school boards. I think there is a, an accountability to not just represent your own child, although sometimes you have interesting scenarios that come up that may match a topic. I think it's really important that we're in constant communication, that's why I'm a lover of the town hall. I think it's really important that we sit as a group and listen to people come on varied topics at any given time. So I think that listening is really important. I think sometimes we have folks who are really good at speaking. My job here is to do a lot more listening, and to figure out where those insights picked up in conversation, in forums that we have can be provided into the process. That also means I spend some of my time, probably without a lot of fanfare, but I spend time in different elementary schools. I love a popcorn Friday. I love to go and serve popcorn at schools, and meet the parents who are there, and you learn a tremendous amount. And so I think it's really about the listening, and then figuring out how to apply it.
Thank you. Lavinia?
I feel like I have an advantage here, because I don't have any more students in the school district, so I will be able to look with a clear lens, and not just focus on one school. So I'm excited about that. But I also think that it's important to have clear communication. Again, I keep bringing that up, because I just think it's so important, but also visiting the schools. I think that would be really important, and understanding what your community needs are. So thanks.
Thank you. Chinmei?
Yeah, it's a, it's a great question. I think that the way we should approach this is to look at how we can increase the size of the pie. So a lot of parents nowadays are, oh, by the way, I want to just say one thing. If this was about my son, who's here today, and he's a high-cap fellow, high capability, I would be talking about that, but I don't think that is the top issue right now. We have bigger problems to deal with. So going back to my point, my motto is no talent left behind. What I mean by that is that every teacher, every administration should know, by looking at a child, every child, by the way, what is that child's talent? If you don't ask that question as a superintendent, or as a, not a superintendent, but teacher certainly, you're doing something wrong. The point of school is to make sure that every child finds their talent, and then can spend their life, you know, one or more talents, developing those talents. And we cannot look at these children as numbers, first of all. We have to listen to them, we have to listen to parents, I've said that already. I think that we want more students in the district. So the metric I would use for success here is that are more students leaving private school, leaving homeschool, and coming back? Because they feel like, I am confident, this is a great way to teach my and educate my son. That's our daughter, that's what I want. In terms of listen, not speak, well, you know what? Absolutely, we need to listen to all the students, and all the teachers, and make sure that there is a two-way communication between them, and I think that if we give them the right metrics and goals, they will succeed. Thank you.
We've moved along quickly this evening, so I'm going to throw in some more questions, just for fun, and make sure, because they're very fun, right? And we can get some more information out of them. So talk to me about appreciation for teachers. What do you think is most needed to support our teachers? And I will start with Chinmei.
So my daughter, when she was in school, I knew a lot of her teachers, and I knew my, for my son as well, and I have a great respect for teachers, I have a family full of teachers. And I think that I worked with engineers for twenty-five years, bright engineers, and you know what the first rule is, when you deal with engineers and you want them to innovate? Get out of their way. And I think that teachers are often overly constrained by red tape, by procedures, by, by rules, and I will do everything in my power to unleash their creativity, and unblock them if they need resources. Whatever I can do, I will do with the influence of the other board members, of course. And I think in terms of the other part of the question, let me think about what else I was going to say here. Yeah, one of the things I want to do is, look at the bottom percentile of students in academic standards, and always try to improve them, so that we are always increasing the bar, and increasing the average, instead of bringing down the whole average or the whole scoring system by changing the grading process or something like that. We can do that, but we should also try to raise the lowest percentile of the kids as much as we can, because if we can succeed in that, I guarantee you, everyone above that will also rise at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you. Lavinia?
I think we have some amazing teachers here in the Issaquah School District, and I think it would be important to listen to their needs, and to speak to them, and try to act on what they're requesting. I mean, not every, not everything you'll be able to act on, but just listening and being able to accommodate. But if those needs are not able to be met, explain why. Don't just leave a question mark. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Natalie?
So I gained a great appreciation for teachers when my daughter started kindergarten during COVID, trying to teach a five-year-old how to open a laptop, and join meetings, and mute, while I was also at home working, and my husband was at home working. So I also art docent quite a bit, and just an hour of doing art docent in the classroom, I'm exhausted when I get home, and I need a nap. So, you know, I, I've been on the PTA board at my school for the last three years, I've been a volunteer, so I've made a lot of connections with teachers, and it's mainly listening to them. What are they struggling with? I mentioned gaps before, what are gaps that they need filled, and that the board can help with? I know a teacher right now who's struggling with the new grading system, and she's going to write the board, if she hasn't already, about what she's struggling with, and, and if that can be looked at. So, you know, it's a matter of being available to our teachers, and accessible, and continuing communication, to hear them, and listen to them, and make sure that they have those avenues, so that they can have their needs addressed. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Sydney?
I think first and foremost, it's about treating our teachers as the highly-trained professionals that they are, and understanding that their perspective is critical and important to what happens in the classroom, as well as outside of the classroom. And it's also important, the role that the district has to play, in really that the school is their workplace, so do they have the conditions, the workplace safety, do they have what they need to be successful inside of the building? I think as the professionals they are, it's really important to make sure that there's enrichment opportunities. Are they able to learn, grow, get access to additional training, or certification, or how they grow their own careers, and feel more successful as individuals? And I think, you know, I think we spend, we spend time, we probably don't spend enough, but we do spend time specifically with listening sessions with teachers across the district, and listen to what may be building-specific concerns, what could be situational concerns, what may be, how do we get feedback on policies before they're rolled out? And sometimes we don't get that right, right? Sometimes we're hearing about policies after they get rolled out, and we need to figure out how to, how to tune those. But I think it's really important that, you know, our teachers are an incredible engine of what we do here. They're critical to how we support our students every day, and it's a really important job of ours to make sure they're working in the environment, and getting what they need to continue their own professional growth and development.
Thank you. Another question for you. What was your involvement with the schools prior to running for school board? Lavinia, I'll start with you.
So I've been in the district for nineteen years, and I've been involved in PTA, PTSA, and also Girl Scout troop leader. So I've been in, so I've volunteered multiple, multiple times, so much so that at the elementary school, they thought I worked there, like, when are you getting off today? So that has been my involvement in the school district.
Thank you. Sydney?
So my work started as an assistant coach to rec boys' basketball for second and third graders, which meant I was really good at telling boys to hold the ball while coach After that, the way I really came to the work of the board is my daughter, who I mentioned, she has a strong fairness gene, and when she entered middle school, she came home often complaining about the concern she had with inequity of discipline, and how it was being applied in her school, particularly for black boy children. I was then offered an opportunity, or became aware of an opportunity, to join a, a group that was working on inequities and discipline, and I joined it. And after my first session, I decided I probably should stay a while, and figure out how I bring my time and my talents to the district, and so that's how I got started.
Thank you. Chinmei?
Yeah, so I have a daughter who graduated from Liberty High School two years ago, and she had special needs, right? So she couldn't walk until the age of seven, and she had IEP all through high school. So our time was consumed by making sure that she was doing well, but I still volunteered in the school as much as I could. For my son, though, he didn't have that challenge, and so I started doing a lot more. I became a TEELS computer science teacher in Bellevue High, and taught over there for a little bit, when he was in elementary school. And then I participated in physics Olympiads in, in middle school, as well as math Olympiad for high school, as a judge. And I've been a high-nine sports coach, and I've done what I could to, to help the kids along with the other commitments. But I think this is my biggest step, is to recognize that there is a need, I have to try and see if I can make a difference, and jump into the fray, and do the biggest volunteer job that I can think of, which is to spend all of my spare time looking at how we can improve the school district with data, with compassion, and with experience of both a special-needs child and a average child, right? And, and see what I can, how I can improve the lot of- And see what I can, how I can improve the lot of my community in which I live and, by the way, which I really love. When I came to this country, I thought, wow, what a great place. So I want to give back. Thank you.
Thank you. Natalie?
So volunteerism is the cornerstone of any great community, and I am a little obsessed with volunteering, right? Any opportunity I can to be in my children's school and help, I will. Art was my gateway. I started as art docent during my daughter's COVID kindergarten year. We did art virtually. And then we were the first volunteers that got to come back into the school while we were still trying to get through COVID. There's kind of a joke inside of PTAs that most people are forced by their friend to join. I was not the case. I wanted to be involved. So when the Director of Ongoing Programs became available, I got elected into the board and have thoroughly enjoyed supporting programs like Popcorn Friday, Watch Dogs. And then I've taken over the Eagle Reader Program, which is a program for students to earn free books by reading monthly. And so I co-chaired it last year, and I'm chairing it on my own starting this year. And I'm just really excited to be able to help kids earn books and bring them home and keep them forever. So, yeah, I've really enjoyed volunteering, and anytime I see something like STEM, I chaired the Science Fair this year, which was a blast. So any opportunity I can, I jump in. So I'm hoping I can get elected and take on this.
Thank you. Throw in one last question. I'm going to start with Sidney because as the one person who would not be new to your role, what steps would you take to help a new board member integrate into the school board?
So we've got a process for that, which is awesome. We actually do have a board member handbook. It outlines, it's available online, so please look at it now if you haven't. But it outlines all of the policies that we work under, all of the scheduling that we work under, our opportunities for professional development, the schedule of our year. And then I've also in our, we had two board members join us in the last round of elections, and so I've acted as a mentor to one of, to Matt Coyne as he joined the board and just helping him navigate the process, navigate the people, the players, the acronyms, because it is an entire new world. So I think it's really important work to make sure that as folks join this activity with us, that they have a really good sense of the ecosystem, both here locally, how schools are financed, how we work with our statewide legislative partners, the funding sources for schools. And so I look forward to having the opportunity to do some more onboarding.
Thank you. So for those of you who would be new to this role, what steps are you taking to learn about the role now? And if elected, what next steps will you take in the first 90 days in the role? Natalie, I'll start with you.
So since I filed for candidacy on May 5th, I've jumped both feet into the websites, the board meetings. I think I've watched 12 board meetings that are on YouTube, which I've thoroughly enjoyed because I've learned a lot. I have met with council members of Issaquah, of Samamish, and of Renton to understand what are some of the things that they're dealing with that will impact the school district. Some of them are here tonight. I have met with Superintendent Taoyik to understand her expectations as far as, you know, I know that she reports to the board, but, you know, kind of understanding, you know, what's to come. And I also have met with Martin Turney, the CFO and COO, to understand budgeting because that's a kind of a blind spot for me. So I want to understand the steps it takes, you know, through the process of getting the budget approved through the board. So I've taken a lot of steps to try to get myself up to speed so that if elected, I can hit the ground running. So for the first 90 days, I mean, I think a lot of it is the onboarding, right? Understanding, you know, again, what are things that are currently happening? What are things that are being worked on? And how I can get up to speed as quickly as possible so that I can be an effective member of the board? Thank you.
Chinmei?
Yeah, I'm going to start you guys with a quote from Pablo Picasso. He said that "learn the rules like a master, so you can break them like an artist." Now, I have attended many board meetings, I mean, not many, I have three or four board meetings, and I've had my two minutes of fame, you know, in the board meeting, looked at it from the outside, and it's great. But I think a lot can happen outside the board meeting in terms of study and preparation and hard work that we don't see in the board meeting. Over the last one month, I have, two months, I have read every document on the Issaquah School District website. I have created multiple AI agents to help me to munch the data and figure out what's going on and how we can improve things. Of course, this is an art, like I said, Pablo Picasso, right? But I think that I will certainly look for guidance from the existing school board members because human experience has no parallel. It is priceless. But I think we should also look at things from a fresh perspective, and I hope that I can add something to the board, the esteemed board, and make my small contribution as soon as possible after I join. I hope I don't need an entire year or something like that to ramp up. I'm willing to put in the hard work and make that happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lavinia?
So I have met with school board members. I've met with the superintendent to prepare. I've met with the mayor of Issaquah and just trying to build connections, council members. And I've been on the website numerous, numerous times, but also my experience. I've also attended school board meetings. Right now, you guys are probably like, she doesn't say much. Well, this is because I am nervous, guys. So because I'm not presenting myself, well, it does not mean that I'm not a good candidate. You really need to just have a conversation with me and understand what my priorities are. But that's what I am.
Thank you. Thank you for answering all of our questions and taking a few extras. We'll now give each candidate the opportunity for some closing comments. I'll start with Chinmei.
I'm always number one. What's going on?
Not always.
Again, I'm Chinmei. I'm running for board position too, and I've already introduced myself, so I won't bore you with that. I do have a couple of comments that I had started to write down, but I'm always caught off-guard as number one. So, yeah. I think going back to what my platform is, right? We need to focus on making sure that both teachers and students have peace of mind when they start learning. And that means safety, emotional safety, physical safety. Whatever metrics we have right now in the data, I'm going to try and work with the board to extract them and make sure that we follow through on them and improve these numbers on a quarter-to-quarter basis. Academic excellence, same deal, but it's not just about scores. In the new economy, CTE is going to be extremely important because we are going to re-industrialize at a different scale. You already see how AI is having an effect on tech jobs. We need to make sure that our kids are ready for the real world, and that's what I'll focus on, on things like nursing, advanced manufacturing. These are new industries, and we need to make sure every kid has a CTE option that they want to try out where their talent lies. Number three, fiscal prudence. You already talked about fiscal prudence and how to improve that. So again, I won't bore you here, but I think we need to get back that trust, again, making sure that we go back to these, to our voters, to our taxpayers. By the way, seven out of 10 people in this district who vote are taxpayers, but they don't have kids in the system. Their kids have grown out of it. We need to make sure we keep their trust. We need to make sure the parents' trust is with us and they don't move out of public school. Governance-based, data-driven approach, already spoke about that quite a bit, but that is the linchpin, the underlying change in the governance model that we need in order to make a longstanding improvement to the school district. Whether I am there or not, I think we need those kinds of longstanding improvements. Finally, I'll just say, go to votchinnmai.org, vote in the August 5th primary. It is very important that every citizen votes and make sure that, I hope for your support, but yeah, make sure you vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Natalie?
Well, first, I want to thank the Issaquah Highland Council for hosting us tonight. I'm with Lavinia. This was a very nerve-wracking experience, but I appreciate everyone that came out to support and meet us. So I'm going to be a little vulnerable here. I did not attend a four-year college, like everyone else sitting here at this table. I went straight into the workforce. I grew up in Woodinville. I went to the North Shore School District. And unfortunately, in the 90s, they did not have programs like CTE and other alternative options for kids if they didn't want to go to college or couldn't afford college. So CTE is really close to my heart because of my background and my experience. And I think that that's something unique that I can bring to the board, is I didn't go to college, I don't have the degrees, so my mindset is thinking, what else can we give our kids? What other options? We're already doing great things, but we can still do more. And I'm really excited because I've been in aerospace for two decades. I, you know, worked my way up in my career, and aerospace is coming into CTE this year, so that's wonderful. Despite that, I was endorsed by the Issaquah Education Association. So a panel of teachers across our district picked me as their candidate of choice. So I think that that says a lot about my thought process and the support that I want to provide to our students and our educators in our community. If elected, I will lead with integrity, passion, and transparency. And I think I have great skills with connecting with people, and I think that that goes a long way. So please vote for me. You can visit natalieanderson.com, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Lavinia?
Well, thank you for hosting this wonderful night. I have spoken in front of people before, and I'm normally really, really good at it. I'm used to having notes. I'm not used to being put on the spot. I am truly a deep thinker and a problem solver. And right now, I'm not presenting myself as such. That's because I didn't get time to think about these questions and understand the questions. I also like to process things, take my time with it. And I understand that being on the board, you actually get information about a week in advance. So that would be something that I actually can deeply think about and actually try to solve those little problems, solve those problems. I implore you to take a look at all of our websites, not just mine. This vote is yours. So it would, you know, as much as I want you to vote for me, understand who you are voting for. Don't just vote because there's a smile on somebody's face or that they had good conversation. That doesn't necessarily mean that's a good vote. So, thank you.
Thank you. Sidney?
So doing the work of the Issaquah School Board has been some of the most gratifying work of my life. I have a wonderful career and a great family, but there's something that really touches the heart for me of being able to be in support of this community and being supportive of all of our kids. So I'd like to continue to do that work for the district. I'm in a slightly different race, so my race for my position will not be on the ballot for your primary. It will be on the ballot in November, so remember me for then. And please go to votecydney.com and learn more about me. The wonderful thing about this work is I think for me, it's been, I've been able to bring together my background around quality assurance, around financial controls, around operations, and really spend the time to learn deeply about how the systems work in our district, to be able to ask the provocative question, to be able to support those in the community who maybe don't always get heard. My goal is to continue doing that on behalf of this community. I think it's really important, again, I think it's a beautiful structure of having five individuals come together in order to govern in this way, and it provides a really rich set of individuals and experiences that really bring the best out for our community. Data is something that's deeply important to me. It is very important that we look at how we are truly progressing as a district and that we talk about that honestly. Issaquah is one of the top districts in the state of Washington, and it will continue to be that way because of a lot of hard work from a lot of people. To make sure that we can go from what is a 95% graduation rate to 100% graduation rate, what we have to do is make sure we're helping every single student along the way from pre-K all the way through. And that's the work that I hope to continue to do with your support.
Great. Thank you. Thank you to all of our candidates. Thank you for overcoming your nerves and taking all the questions because they didn't get to know anything we were going to ask. I didn't know some of the things I was going to ask until we were running a little quickly. So appreciate you guys coming out and answers.
But I was not, I'm not nervous anymore. And all of you guys are great, so thank you.
So thank you for coming out and sharing this information. Thank you to all of you for attending, and obviously, be sure to vote.